And Madam Director, we are all ready to go.
All righty. Well, welcome everyone to the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors Meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. Clerk Moss, announcements and roll call, please.
Thank you, Director Harrington. The Board of Commissioners is now meeting in this as the Housing Authority Board of Directors for Washington County in this regular session, December 7th, 2021. Director Willie?
Here.
Director Rogers?
Here.
Director Roper? Let's see that. Director Savar?
Here.
Director Treese?
Here.
Director Phi?
Here.
Director Harrington?
Here. Thank you. We have a full complement of seven today. The first item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up or wishing to speak with us today, Clerk Moss?
We have one signed up, Madam Director, Susan Warnicki. Susan, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm able to hear you. Can you hear me also?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Warnicki, and first of all, I would like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak this morning, and also thank you for the efforts that are being made to keep WoodSpring Apartments affordable for the senior community living there. I became aware of WoodSpring Apartments as part of a project I was doing for a class that I'm taking through Oregon Humanities, exploring social movements through the humanities. As I began research on affordable housing, which is very dear to my heart, I came across Rebecca Ellis's article for OPB and found out about the low-income housing tax credit expiring there after the 30-year period and the fact that those units, those 172 units, could potentially no longer be affordable, that they could be converted to market rate. And so I just became very interested. I created a pamphlet for my class around the situation there. I created a poster and on Sunday walked from my home in Old Town Chinatown to Portland's Square and then all around the downtown area. And I just, it's what our class has called a one-person protest project, but that's how I became interested, and I see my time is running very short. But when I voted in November of 2018, I voted to purchase rehabilitate and preserve affordability of existing housing and to help prevent displacement. And so I thank all of you for all efforts that you're making to keep faith with the voters who voted yes on that bond. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Susan. Madam Director, we have two more signed up for five minutes at the end of the meeting. Yes?
Oh, thank you. Ms. Warnicki, I just want to make sure that you and your class have the benefit of the most recent report out that we as the Board of Directors have received, and this is entirely public information, and our staff has made every effort to share this with all of the residents. And our Housing Director, Comey Calivar, is here with us today, so I know he will correct anything in the summary if I've gotten it wrong. But to the best of the Board's knowledge, the firm that owns WoodSpring has agreed to the required rental period for the next two years through the end of 2023. And in addition, they have not posted at all or given us any indication that they are willing to sell that property. The various investors were planning on having a meeting, and we were hoping that our staff would hear word back from them that they've changed their mind. But unfortunately, we are not in a position to purchase a property if it is not available for sale. So I believe that is the very short version, and it looks like Ms. Angie has a more complete update for us.
We have very recent breaking information. Mr. Calivar, can you please update the Housing Authority on this?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Commissioners. The owners have indicated that they are open to discussing a possible sale, but they have proposed option one is to work with the Housing Authority. Option two is talk to any and all comers. This was last week. However, the term sheet they provided has so much detail missing: price, rate, timing, funding source, how long they are willing to wait. So that's the way it is. The nature of real estate, it's, I think they are struggling with their decision themselves.
Well, there you have it.
Yeah, the proposal they have on the table is a public-private partnership to work on preserving affordability.
So I hope that's helpful toward, for you, Ms. Warnicki.
It is. Thank you. And as far as being able to keep up with the most recent developments and breaking, breaking news, where do I, where do I go to find that information?
Or you can call, you can call me at the Housing Authority, 503-846-4755, and then give me your email. We'll keep you posted.
Right. I can provide you with that, Director Calivar, and we will make sure Susan is informed.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So we will have our second public comment period later in the meeting in a few minutes. The next item on our agenda is our adoption of our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of two items: our minutes from our November 2nd meeting and the approval of updates to the Housing Choice Voucher Program Administrative Plan that we've had the benefit of reviewing and discussing previously. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding today's consent agenda?
Motion?
We have a motion from Director Roper. Do we have a second to adopt today's consent agenda? We have a second from Director Phi. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed Directors? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. And now we move on to our second public comment period of the meeting. Clerk Moss?
Yes, Director. Next, we have Margot Black. Margot, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Washington County Board members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Margot Black. I'm a tenant organizer with WoodSpring Tenants Association. I recently heard, actually from Director Calivar, that the owners of the building, Hamilton Zans, a private equity investment firm out of San Francisco, have entered into conversations about selling the building to Washington County, and likewise, the county has expressed interest in buying it. This is extremely good news. Normally, I'm here to testify, sorry about the dog. Normally, I'm here to testify about, you know, and I'm mad and want to see action, and I'm here to say, wow, we, we have gotten to a new place in this conversation. Now, the devil's in the details. While I'm far from the expert on what comes next, I'm sure there's a long road pitted with opportunities for this to fall through. So I'm testifying today to commend the county and HAWK for their leadership vision and commitment to preserving this building as a source of affordable housing into the future. But I also want to ask us to keep our eye on the ball and on the prize to see it through. It's bold and decisive actions like this that give your constituents confidence that their voices can be heard and that their elected leaders will step in to protect the county's vulnerable residents. When all is said and done, this will be a big win for the county, one that we'll be able to celebrate for years to come. Should there be pitfalls along the way? I would just ask you to remember that WoodSpring is 172 units of sturdy housing occupied almost exclusively by low-income senior citizens, some of whom have called WoodSpring their home for many years. It was set to be affordable to those earning 60% MFI, but many of the residents earned far less and should be on a voucher if only there were enough to go around. Some of these residents are close to the 60% and able-bodied enough to get around, but far more are barely scraping by and living with illnesses and disabilities that cause them to be essentially homebound. Many receive food from Meals on Wheels. Many lack email and basic internet access and literacy. Some are non-English speaking immigrants. Some live with caretakers. Some have children looking in on them. Some have no support system except the community they live in. Some have their own car and are not being unserious when they say that's where they'll have to live soon, but just as many don't even have that as an option. We applaud the county for all the work that you're doing, bringing new affordable units to market, including and especially those designated for seniors. But you don't need to be a math major to see that losing WoodSpring puts us in the red. We can't let it happen. We are over the moon at the news that the county is on board to keep WoodSpring affordable. It's a cause very worthy of public resources. Thank you for your hard work. Keep it up, and we look forward to being collaborative partners in this most exciting endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Next, we have Lois. Lois, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. As you said, my name is Lois Caff. I'm a spokesperson for the WoodSprings Tenant Association, further called WTA. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share our thoughts with the committee and especially for the interest and support of Comey and Catherine, excuse me for being too informal, in our attempt to maintain affordability of WoodSpring Apartments. It is our understanding the committee's position is that the senior-only status be terminated. We understand the concept of eliminating the senior-only status of this two-bedroom property. However, that said, affordable housing for seniors still exists. Therefore, the WTA has chosen to drop its insistence that we maintain the senior-only status. We request that the committee acknowledge this decision as our willingness to be eminently reasonable, inclusive, and collaborative. However, that said, affordable housing for seniors at WoodSpring still exists. Logically, it seems the simplistic option was to maintain the affordable status of this existing property versus the construction of new replacement housing for the present and future seniors. I've been a resident of WoodSpring since October of 2003, having lived in the same unit for these 18-plus years. Needless to say, I consider this my forever home. The concept at age 79 of relocating and basically starting over is not only financial and physically extremely difficult, it has a definite devastating effect on my emotional well-being. Most of the current residents are expressing exactly the same feelings. Having been an active member of this residential community, I've made so many special friends that I've become like family. Activities such as potlucks, holiday celebrations, multiple types of games in the clubhouse, et cetera, all of which has created a sense of community, and to many of the residents, their opportunity for social interaction. It was clear to me from very day one that WoodSpring's original and ongoing purpose was devoted to the creation of an affordable, supportive, and inclusive lifestyle for seniors. I know a lot has changed over the last 18 years in the need for affordable housing for not only seniors but families as well. Our request to the committee today is that you explore all the options that will maintain the existing affordable status for our current residents, residents who are experiencing the insecurity resulting from potentially losing their homes. We strongly believe it should be the county's job to take care of not only these but all seniors. Hopefully, the committee will see the cost effectiveness of maintaining the affordability of this existing property versus constructing new replacement housing for the present as well as future residents. Many years ago, I managed Eastern Ridge, a Section 42 property owned by this county. That community was never disappointed in their support and responsiveness to our residents and property condition. As a result, we maintained a low turnover rate, which had a positive impact on the bottom line. I'm confident this could also occur with the WoodSpring property. I'm truly pleased to hear that the county is considering purchasing WoodSpring, so hope conversations continue in that positive direction so that residents will finally start to feel hopeful instead of desperate. So my, please keep up the good work to you all. I would thank you for the opportunity to share with you our concerns. We're willing to help you in any way we can as we move forward to a positive solution for this affordable housing concern. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Madam Director, that is everyone signed up. Would any other members of public wish to testify to the Board? Not seeing any hands, Madam Director.
I would like to thank Ms. Keck, Ms. Black, and Ms. Warnicki for joining us today. We've received many people coming and testifying both at our monthly Housing Authority, Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting as well as at our board meetings, plus correspondence. It was really wonderful to get the update in today's meeting alongside with you and to have some hopeful news. I know it's been a long, very anxious journey so far, and we still have a lot of unknowns for our staff to explore, but I'm really delighted that it seems like we are on a positive path going ahead. Thank you. Ms. Angie, I see that Director, or Housing Director Calivar has his hand raised. Would you like me to call on him?
Yes, he will discuss next steps.
Yes, so the WoodSpring Apartments, 122 units in Tigard, the owners emailed, which we shared with the Board, that they want to do a public-private partnership. And then one condition they had was a tenant lawsuit that was pending, a class action. Margot Black, who is the community organizer working with the tenants, has informed us that the class action lawsuit has been withdrawn. However, there's some individual suits pending. So that's from the owner's perspective. Initially, they wanted to do public-private partnership. They have since then said they are, they will consider a sale under the right conditions. We have told them, we, the Housing Authority staff, that a sale will be subject to Board approval, and that internally, we have a real estate committee that meets on these issues, and it requires a unanimous vote of that committee before we complete our due diligence and then get it in front of the Board. The funding source that would enable this to happen is the preservation dollars, $100 million that the state set aside for preserving housing like this. Unfortunately, the state housing agency is not going to make that money available until the fall of 2022. And when it's available, you know, we would apply or nonprofits could apply. We have been approached by another nonprofit called Bridge that is also looking at WoodSpring. So short, long story short, there's a lot of efforts underway to preserve the affordability of the building, and the owners are open once they deal with the lawsuits that are pending. When they did, when they approached us that they are open to selling, there was practically very little detail in terms of price, subject to appraisal, if the public-private partnership would continue or not, and whether public financing is available to fill, to fill the gap, because probably, probably, we have done some initial financial modeling, and there is a gap. And so with the states, sources, and whatever other sources we can cobble together with our partners, whether nonprofit or with the current owners, I think there's work underway to help the situation. So, and I'll make a quick reference to the Section 8. Somebody mentioned vouchers. There's no voucher discussion yet with the owners, even though it did come up in our conversation. We have voucher occupancy standards, and as we have it, the occupancy standards require at least one and a half to two persons per bedroom. So that's, that's the end of my report.
Remember, a moment of clarification, Housing Authority Board of Directors, I don't believe that letter had made it to you yet, so Clerk Moss will ensure that's in your inbox as soon as possible.
Okay, so, so we're getting a letter that Mr. Calivar referred to. Could we also, in addition to this verbal update, could we get a summary of where things are at now and the next steps moving forward? In addition, Ms. Angie, can we on the Board of Directors be assured that you will share this latest update with Mayor Jason Snyder and the City Council and the City Manager of Tigard? Because we've all been navigating this uncertainty thus far together. I'm really delighted that we have a late-breaking update for today and appreciate the exploration that our great housing staff continue to do. We, and, you know, we, we just need to keep, keep in line moving forward, so we're all aware of what is being explored and how folks, individuals, and community members might get some clarity between now and the current notice that the residents have received from the building owners. Board members, do you have any other questions or information needs with regard to WoodSpring beyond what Mr. Calivar and Ms. Angie have covered and the information requests that I tried to summarize for our benefit?
Two things. We're all sensitive, obviously. This is my district, but Comey, the issue is the price, obviously. It's being, I think, a very significant, what I've heard is very significant ask, but need to do that. Secondly, you used a phrase there at the end that I think maybe everyone, maybe didn't hone in on, but we need a little more definition. Units of this size are meant to be for occupants of at least one to two per bedroom, as I understand. That's a federal program. And in these units, there's many, as many as two bedrooms for one occupant. And so I want to know if there's a way around that. I mean, is there, can we find that that doesn't, that doesn't have to be applied? So that's a huge, huge question in this, in my mind. So, anyway, any information you can provide, that'd be great.
That's a question for me. Yeah, okay, yeah. Occupancy standards, there's not, while there is reasonable accommodations, that could be granted, but that will be on a case-by-case basis in terms of the occupancy standards. The price, we have not engaged on the price question yet. We know based on market rents, which is what the owners, that's one of the issues of contention, was a change from affordable to market rents. But based on those market rents, we estimate it could be 38 million or more to acquire the building. Based on affordable rents, it's much less.
So I think, Mr. Calivar, what, what Director Rogers is highlighting is just making sure that we, the residents, and the Tigard City Council, and our community members, so at least four different audiences, understand that as future options, such as the Housing Authority requesting financial support from the state of Oregon, that there are certain requirements. And once again, I'll try and summarize, that units that have two bedrooms need to have more than one resident. If I'm...
Yes, for rental assistance purposes.
Yes, yes. Okay. I, you know, I think we're, we've been hearing and learning that this is complicated, and, you know, I, I would just ask that our, our website for our role on this project provide a good overview. I think in the correspondence that I've seen our expert team provide for constituent emails has been providing really good information. But as far as I know, the only way folks have had the benefit of receiving that is if they email us as the Board members or staff. So the, the more tools we have to increase that level of understanding, the better off we'll all be. So I'm just trying to identify that need in a graceful manner. So, did I articulate all of that correctly, Mr. Calivar and Ms. Angie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Roper?
Say that to Commissioner Rogers and Comey, correct me if I'm wrong. I think last year with COVID, during the pandemic, a lot of things happened, and so the guidelines for how many occupancies, that's when it, they really honed in on it. I think it was last fall, about August, where they, they came up with this one to two people per unit. And so it was a lot of questions around public housing vouchers in Section 8 in regards to that comment and what that looked like and who should share rooms. So it was really hard then, and it's, and it's just the way things are right now that we have to just kind of go with the flow. And, you know, nobody likes it, but it's just the way it is. So you got the tough job, Comey, but I think I'd just like to point that out. That's just not something that was always there. It's just something new. And Community Action has a great resource for how to write reasonable accommodation letters. Please check out their website. They can help you with that. And I'm really proud of the housing team and the efforts, especially when we were being bombarded back in August and July with all this information about WoodSprings. You guys did a lot of footwork from then to now, so I recommend y'all. Thank you.
That's wonderful praise for our staff. Thank you very much, Director Roper, as well as some good resource pointers. Thank you for sharing that with all of us. Any other items, questions, comments on WoodSpring? Okay, thank you. Next, Board, any other Board of Director announcements for today? Go ahead, Director Roper.
Sorry for taking the stage. I just wanted to apologize for my performance. I was out due to a medical emergency, so I'm glad to be back in good health and, and recovery. So I appreciate you guys' understanding and hope everything went well. And thank you for the information that Comey kept me in the loop. So I appreciate it all, and I'm happy to be back. Thank you. So I appreciate it all and I'm happy to be back. Thank you.
And we're very happy to have you. You helped make the Board of Directors more informed, thoughtful. You're, you bring a lot to the table for us. And I appreciate your service and that of Director Savaro as well. So great. Anything else, Directors? Okay, I think that's it for today. Do we have a motion to adjourn the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting for today?
A motion?
We have a motion from Director Roper, a second from Director Savaro. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Directors Roper and Savaro, thank you very much. And we'll see you in our new year. Take care.
Thank you, Directors.
Thank you, Comey. All right. We will now convene as the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Clerk Moss, do we have all of our tech at the ready? And if so, could you do the meeting announcements and roll call?
Absolutely, Madam Chair. Washington County Board of Commissioners, also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts, is now meeting in this regular session, December 7th, 2021. Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Fai.
Here.
Vice Chair Trese.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here. Thank you. On today's agenda, compared to the very first publication, we pulled one item off the consent agenda, C six, but added an additional one, C nine. And just recently, there is additional supplemental material for item D two, which is one of our public hearings, the second one on ordinance eight eighty-one. So those are just some agenda updates in case any attendees to the meeting need to download the latest agenda packet off of our website. Alrighty, Clerk Moss, do we have anyone signed up to speak with us in our first oral communication period which, where folks are limited to two minutes?
We have no one signed up, Madam Chair. Our signups are related to the public hearing, item D dot two.
Alrighty, well, hopefully we can get there very soon. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. And for that, we have one item under Clean Water Services, two items under the District Attorney, two items coming to us from Support Services, two items from Land Use and Transportation, and one item from County Council's office. What are the wishes from the Commission regarding today's consent agenda? We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. We have a second from Vice Chair Trese. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Well, next we will move right into our public hearings. The first one is to legalize a portion of Southwest South County Road as County Road three thousand three hundred and thirty-five. Boy, we have a lot of county roads, don't we? So we have a resolution in order. We'll have a brief staff report and then we will have a public hearing. Our Director of Land Use and Transportation, Stephen Roberts, and our Traffic Engineer, Stacy Shetler, are here with us today. I'd like to turn it over to you two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm actually gonna ask Stacy, our County Engineer, to walk us through a brief staff report and then we can open up the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Harrington and members of the Board. For the record, I'm Stacy Shetler, County Engineer with the Department of Land Use and Transportation. As the Chair mentioned before you today, is the matter of legalizing a portion of South Road, County Road thirty-three thirty-five. Next slide. South Road runs southeast of the Cherry Grove community to the Yam Hill County line. The road is located in Commission District Four and maintained by Washington County. Research and analysis of the record documents, along with survey fieldwork, concludes that a portion of the legal right-of-way is uncertain and needs to be clarified. This uncertainty was realized as a result of a planned bridge replacement project. Next slide. Based upon maintenance and survey records, the portion of South Road to be legalized has been traveled in its current location for over ninety years. Statutes provide that a county governing body may initiate proceedings to legalize a county road if the location of the road cannot be accurately determined. The establishment date of this road cannot be determined due to the missing county road notes and survey. Without the original road notes or survey, it's uncertain what the width of the road was at the time of establishment. However, surveys and survey monuments in the area suggest that the road was intended to be forty feet wide. This information is the basis of the staff recommendation for forty feet. There are no permanent structures that predate the travel alignment of the road and the proposed right-of-way. Next slide. The adjacent property owners were notified per statute. To our knowledge, there's no opposition to the legalization. However, your Board may receive additional input during the public hearing today for your consideration on this matter. Next slide. Based on the foregoing information, staff request your Board first, conduct the public hearing and then second, approve the resolution in order. This concludes the staff report. My information is on the next slide and I can answer questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions with regard to this topic? Seeing none, I'm going to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone wishing to testify during this public hearing?
We have no one signed up, Madam Chair. Would any members of the public wish to testify on this resolution in order? Please utilize raise hand function. Give you just a moment. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Vice Chair Trese, did you have a question or comment? Okay, all right. Do we have a motion then to adopt this resolution in order legalizing Southwest, a portion of Southwest South Road as County Road three, 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 five? We have a motion from Commissioner Fai, a second from Vice Chair Trese. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank, oh, thank you, Commissioner. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Our second public hearing is with regard to an ordinance. So as such, we first need a motion to read Ordinance number eight, eight, one by title only. We have a motion from Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a second? A second from Commissioner Fai. All those in favor of reading this ordinance by title only, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr.
Ordinance eight, eight, one, an ordinance amending the transportation system plan element of the comprehensive plan relating to general updates.
Thank you. Staff report first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Steve Kelly and Aaron Wardell from our Long Range Transportation Planning Group are gonna walk through a staff report and then the two of them, myself and Andy Back, our Planning and Development Services Manager, are available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Chair Harrington and members of the Board of Commissioners. I am Aaron Wardell, Principal Transportation Planner, and I'm going to introduce Steve Kelly, Senior Transportation Planner, who will cover the staff report.
Good morning. Thank you. Yes, I'm Steve Kelly, Long Range Transportation Planner with the Department. I do have something of a lengthy presentation this morning, but I will try to get through it as quickly as I can. You have before you this morning, Ordinance number eight eighty-one. And this ordinance is the first of three transportation system plan amendment ordinances that have been filed. The other two ordinances will be discussed by the Planning Commission at their next meeting on December fifteenth. And they'll be back before you in January. Ordinance eight eighty-one is a series of general updates to the transportation system plan, while the other two ordinances focus on very specific amendments. Next slide, please. The presentation this morning will review a background of the transportation system plan and provide a brief summary of how the transportation system plan fits into the process that a project goes from being someone's idea to a constructed facility on the ground. We'll also review the studies that developed the recommendations that are in this ordinance and provide a summary of each recommendation, each exhibit. And we'll also summarize the PC deliberations and their recommendation, as well as the staff recommendation. Next slide, please. The transportation system plan is a component of the Long Range Comprehensive Plan. And it was developed and updated over a multiple-year process with extensive public involvement, outreach and engagement in the twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen adoption cycles, two-year cycle. The transportation system plan contains our policy goals, objectives and strategies that inform how we go about doing transportation studies, as well as inform project selection, such as our MSTIP program, I know you guys have been focused on. The transportation system plan also contains modal plans for our roadways, our trails and other transportation features. And Ordinance eight eighty-one will focus on some updates to those modal plans. This is an opportunity for the Board to adopt the outcomes from those studies into our comprehensive plan. Next slide, please. The transportation plan is about thinking ahead and identifying our long-term community needs and solutions to address those needs. Transportation studies tend to focus on identifying a range of possible solutions and focus on how to address those needs. And then the transportation studies can be adopted, the recommendations from transportation studies can be adopted into that first Chevron there at the top of the project process, the transportation system plan. So the, the, the next step of the project, the selection follows that after identifying the needs and solutions. And that next step can take a long time before it, it becomes a reality, the funding or other project selection. And generally, projects get implemented through one of two different types of processes. And the first is the one we normally naturally think about is public funding. And as we think about funding improvements, the criteria that we use is sort of, the first one is, is it on the transportation plan? And identifying projects for funding is really the process of selecting community priorities. The other way that projects get implemented is through private development requirements. And if something is on the transportation plan, private development is required to respond to those solutions that are identified on the plan. And if a developing property is identified with one of those solutions or adjacent to one of those solutions, they have to deal with the attributes that are identified on the plan. And that step from transportation system planning to project selection is a process that can often take decades. At this stage, the planning stage, people sometimes assume that a project is intended to occur right away. That is not the case for any of the amendments proposed by Ordinance eight eighty-one. Also, at the transportation system plan stage, some parties ask for additional details about the natural environment or other elements of the project that would be determined after the project is selected for funding during that next Chevron, project development stage. So it's important to understand that the projects on the transportation plan amendments before you today are at a high level and they're generalized solutions, but they're not necessarily ready for funding. And they haven't completed the detailed analysis necessary as part of project development for them to be constructed. Next slide, please. Many of the amendments proposed in Ordinance eight eighty-one respond to recent urban growth boundary expansions, particularly along the western edge of the Portland metropolitan area, as shown in this graphic. These areas combined result in the potential for nearly eighteen thousand additional household, households and families living through this corridor. Next slide, please. So in response to all of the potential growth and development throughout this area, Washington County and the cities of Washington County have been coordinating on how to consider transportation needs and potential solutions through a, a range of studies that are listed here. Next slide, please. The existing transportation system in this area tends to funnel north-south traffic onto a limited number of roadways. And those roadways were never intended to handle this type of traffic. The studies have resulted in a recommendation for a mixture of road improvements that serve the needs of the traveling public. And these improvements go both over and around Cooper Mountain and provide options for travelers to use multiple routes. The growing community needs all of these roadways and improvements to serve these developing areas and make the transportation system work better for everyone. Next slide, please. The city of Beaverton's urban planning area is right in the middle of those urban growth boundary expansion areas. And therefore, the city and city staff have been coordinating with county staff and working through the transportation needs and solutions for this area, several of which are included in Ordinance eight eighty-one before you stay, and some of the others are coming in Ordinance eight eighty-two and eight eighty-three next month. Next slide, please. There has been considerable public engagement on both city planning efforts, as well as the transportation studies that have led to the recommendations before you today in Ordinance eight eighty-one. The ordinance itself has followed the required ordinance notification, as well as staff has supplied courtesy notices to property owners that could be affected by the roadway amendments in the Cooper Mountain area. Next slide, please. The proposed Cooper Mountain-related amendments have resulted in most of the testimony at the Planning Commission, but there are other important items that are included in Ordinance eight eighty-one as a result of other studies. And those other studies include the Twalton Valley Trail Concept Plan, the Tonklin Employment Area Concept Plan by the city of Sherwood, and the Basalt Creek Area Concept Plan led jointly by the cities of Twalton and Wilsonville. Next slide, please. So Ordinance eight eighty-one is divided into eight exhibits. Those exhibits include the realignment of one hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue curves, the identification of one hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Extension Planning Level Alignment in Exhibit Two. Exhibit three has the Grabhorn Road Curves Alignment. Exhibit four is an amendment to the functional classification of Tile Flat Road between Park Hill and Grabhorn Roads. Next slide, please. Exhibit five has the Tonklin Area East-West Collector, which has been renamed by the city of Sherwood as Ice Age Drive. And I think our materials reference it both ways. Exhibit six has TV Highway Regional Trail Refinement Area between one hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue and one hundred and sixtieth Avenue. Exhibit seven has the Basalt Creek Area Amendments adopted by the city of Wilsonville, and Exhibit eight has the amendments to the functional classification. Design parameters table necessary to implement. Design parameters table necessary to implement, uh, exhibits. Uh, next slide, please. So just a minute ago, I talked about how the existing transportation system funnels traffic onto a few limited county roadways. And a hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue is one of those roadways. And a hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue is expected to continue to serve considerable traffic uh, through that area. The proposed, uh, alignment here in ordinance eight eighty one is a refinement of the existing plan based on engineering assessment through the Urban Reserves Transportation Study and working with, uh, Beaverton South Cooper Mountain Study. The refined, uh, alignment here is intended to minimize the impacts and related expense and allow for improvements to proceed. Next slide, please. Exhibit two was the, uh, the topic of most of the testimony that we've received at the Planning Commission. And it is the extension from, uh, of a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue from Gassner Road South to Kemmer Road. Um, the, the, uh, and I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes talking about deliberations and issues, uh, on the a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Extension. Uh, the sequence of planning in, in this area is a bit complex. It's a county roadway that is needed to support development in the surrounding areas. Um, the extension was initially proposed in the South Cooper Mountain Planning and has been adopted by the City of Beaverton's Transportation System Plan. But it's on land that is unincorporated. Uh, the area is anticipated to be rezoned as urban residential. And is, uh, the corridor itself is likely to support at least a hundred and eighty single-family dwelling units and substantially more in the surrounding areas nearby. Uh, and again, much of the testimony is focused not only on the road here but on the urban development and protecting the natural areas. Next slide, please. So the exhibit, uh, proposed is to replace our currently adopted refinement area in the transportation system plan with a, a general alignment. And the reason for bringing this forward now is the Urban Reserves Transportation Study was able to do uh, an engineering feasibility evaluation. Uh, so now staff recommends that the specific alignment be adopted to facilitate development in this area when it occurs, uh, which might be many years in, into the future. Next slide, please. The proposal in ordinance, uh, eight eighty one is for a two-lane urban collector roadway with turn lanes where needed. And we do anticipate that the roadway would be a requirement of private development on the land in this corridor. Uh, the proposed amendment is for a collector roadway that would not only provide for a needed connection but also serve, uh, this area as it develops. Uh, the collector would provide for emergency vehicle connections that would not, that would otherwise need to go out of direction as well as other traffic through here. Uh, the collector allows for relief from anticipated traffic growth and the potential needs to widen a hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue or other corridors, which would be extremely impactful. Uh, there was a prior iteration of this slide that showed circles where the intersections are, uh, shown on this graphic. And our transportation plan does not define intersection treatments. Um, and those would be figured out during project development. So this graphic's been amended to no longer show the circles, uh, just for clarity, but there has been a number of comments related to, uh, uh, certain the traffic circles around about and, and those are not, uh, identified what the intersection treatments would be like in our, in our plan. Next slide, please. The proposed alignment here would avoid the most sensitive, um, identified mapped riparian areas. Uh, frankly, the most significant environmental decision in this area was the decision to include the area within the urban growth boundary. And it is the policy of the region and the county to efficiently use land within the urban growth boundary. Uh, which means that this area will eventually have dense urban development. And, um, planning for that will be allowed in, in the future. Uh, the specific details of the environmental impacts in the area would need to be worked out as this area develops. It is anticipated that voluntary annexation to the City of Beaverton would occur, uh, before development here. And that development would be consistent with the city's requirement and need to respond to environmental regulations that are applicable at that time. Next slide, please. And the final slide on a hundred and eighty-fifth, uh, one of the suggestions in the testimony received at the planning commission considered what about just improving the existing roads only? And staff has considered that and in a number of places that actually works as we showed for a hundred and seventy-fifth Avenue and included in this ordinance, uh, for Grabhorn, uh, as examples. Improvements to urban standards would still be needed on the existing roads here to support multimodal travel and frontage improvements could be anticipated as individual properties develop. Any improvements to the intersection at a hundred and ninetieth Avenue and Kemmer, as shown on the, the picture here uh, would be highly constrained. There is a historic, uh, eligible pioneer, uh, cemetery shown on the right, uh, of the photograph there. Um, a- and on the, that's the northeast corner of the intersection that would, uh, improve, be need, be needed to improve the curve through the air, through the intersection. Uh, any improvements to a hundred and ninety, uh, a hundred and ninetieth Avenue and Kemmer Intersection would also be constrained by the nature park to the southeast corner. And those kinds of improvements would not provide for the multiple roadways that are needed to serve this developing area. They would be extremely impactful and likely be at the public's expense as opposed to through the private development process. So as we plan ahead on how to serve traffic through this area, uh, the community needs all the options that are available, uh, including the a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Extension. Uh, next slide, if there's no questions about a hundred and eighty-fifth at this time, I can move on and talk about the, the other e- exhibits. Um, Exhibit Three is the Grabhorn Road Curves. Uh, there, there's two sets of curves. The northern set of two curves is being coordinated with the Willamette Water Supply Project and the project owns the affected property there. Um, and is using that for construction staging. It is anticipated that the Willamette Water Supply Project will dedicate the right of way. Uh, the Urban Reserves Transportation Study took a look at the curves there. There was a thirty mile per hour curve option and a twenty-five mile per hour curve option to improve the existing curves from, that are currently signed at twenty and fifteen miles per hour. And further south, there's two other curves that are now within the urban growth boundary, uh, as of twenty eighteen. Um, and the southern curve alignments are consistent with the City of Beaverton's South Cooper Mountain Plan uh, and considered through the, uh, Urban Resources. Oh. Next slide, please. Exhibit Four proposes the reclassification of Tile Flat Road as a rural collector. Uh, this would be consistent with how the roadway is being utilized today, but it would also uh, allow this segment, uh, additional funding options and a higher priority, uh, for funding as well as maintenance funding. Next slide, please. Uh, Exhibit Five proposes the Ice Age Drive Collector Alignment in Sherwood. A key attribute of this, uh, proposed collector is to avoid moving the power transmission line towers in this area. Uh, moving the, uh, transmission line towers could trigger adjustments through the power line corridors and even require moving other towers, uh, to be relocated and could have considerable impacts and expense. So this was part of the Tonklin Employment Area, uh, planning that Sherwood did. It is based on our understanding of engineering and constraints. Uh, the alignment is, uh, based on access studies at each end and, uh, hooking those two ends together to avoid the constraints. Um, it was part of Sherwood's, uh, request in our work program this year and has been adopted into Sherwood's, uh, Tonklin Employment Area Plan. Next slide, please. Exhibit Six proposes to adopt the trail designation from the Twalton Valley Regional, uh, Trail Concept Plan. Uh, the board acknowledged the Twalton Valley Trail Concept Plan a couple of months ago on August third of twenty twenty-one. In addition to the trail, the Twalton Valley Trail Concept Plan calls for, uh, short-term improvements on Blanton Street and the proposed ordinance includes the enhanced major street bikeway on Blanton Street uh, for consistent with those, uh, shorter term, uh, improvements. Next slide, please. Exhibit Seven proposes several roadway adjustments, uh, adopted by the City of Wilsonville in twenty nineteen that were identified through the Basalt Creek Concept Plan Process. Uh, the proposed changes are needed for consistency with the City of Wilsonville and the Washington County Transportation System Plan. Next slide, please. And finally, Exhibit Eight provides for the enhanced major street bikeway, uh, shown in Exhibit Six. It also eliminates a, um, reference that is n- no longer, uh, eligible to be constructed as in our road standards. It's legacy, uh, statement from two thousand and two and our road standards have since been updated, updated. Uh, this clarifies the expectation of development along collector roads. And that standard could still be allowed in appropriate circumstances with county engineer approval. Next slide, please. So the planning commission held two public hearings on ordinance eight eighty one and continued deliberations to a third meeting. Uh, the main topic of testimony and deliberations was regarding Exhibit Two, the a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Extension. Uh, and that was summarized in the supplemental staff report. Um, at the December one meeting, the planning commission, uh, made the recommendation for the board to approve ordinance eight eighty one. But they did not make any recommendation on Exhibit Two. So all of ordinance eight eighty one, but Exhibit Two, they did not make any recommendation either in favor or opposed to a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Extension. They, they couldn't come to an agreement. Uh, next slide, please. So the staff recommendation for you today is to conduct the public hearing. And following the hearing, adopt ordinance eight eighty one as filed, uh, and as a separate action, adopt the associated findings by a resolution order. And with that, uh, I'll open it up. Uh, Aaron and I are available to, uh, any question, questions you may have. Thank you.
Board members, before we have a public hearing, do you have a, any questions on the materials or the staff report? Go ahead, Vice Chair Treese.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Steve, thank you for the presentation. It was very thorough. I, I appreciate the presentation and, uh, I'd like to ask a a couple of questions around the a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Extension. So, uh, you, you mentioned that the planning commission, uh, did not make a recommendation for this. Uh, can you talk about what the flavor of that discussion was? And, uh, can you, eh, eh, why was there no recommendation there, number one? And number, number two, um, what was the communication between the planning commission and any of the, uh, uh, public in relationship to this extension?
Um, I can start and then Steve can chime in if I've left anything out in this. Um, at the planning commission's hearing on December, uh, sorry, November seventeenth, their second hearing, there were a number of motions related to the one eighty-fifth extension and there ended up being a tie in a number of cases when they tried to go forward. So what we ended up with was about half of the planning commission being in favor of this exhibit and about half of the planning commission not being in favor of the exhibit. Um, those who were in favor expressed that this appears to be, um, normal twenty-year transportation system level planning, acknowledging that the area is urban, is within the urban growth boundary, and so we're planning for a future system. Uh, people who were opposed to it were concerned about environmental impacts, for the most part, of building a new roadway in this area. And they were also being responsive to the property owners who were affected by this, who gave testimony, um, stated that they enjoy having these big open spaces. They enjoy their properties. They don't have plans to develop their properties in the near future. And so I think that was sort of the, the general flavor of the discussion at the planning commission. And so through a number of motions, they were not able to reach agreement. The hearing was continued to December first for further deliberations. And at the December first, um, hearing, basically that same conversation went around and around, and so they weren't able to reach consensus. There was broad support for all other elements in the ordinance. And so that's how they ended up with a compromise motion, which was recommend approval of the ordinance with the exception of this exhibit, which received no recommendation.
Thank you.
And then was there a second part of the question about, uh, communication with the public?
Yes, there, there, there was. I, uh, I believe there were some issues around members of the planning commission talking with the owners of the properties.
Right. So we received, um, public testimony from owners of the affected property as well as nearby neighbors and Cooper Mountain residents. And my understanding, and I may ask county council to weigh in here as well, was that one of the property owners reached out individually to some planning commission members and invited them to meet on the property and take a tour. Um, I don't know if any planning commission members did that. Um, I was not aware of it. If they did, I do know that several planning commission members shared in the hearings that they had taken the time to go to the area, walk around, look at the properties, um, but not necessarily be on any of the individual properties or meet with the property owners. So as far as I know, the full planning commission heard a lot of testimony from community members. And we've gathered a lot of community input throughout all of these studies, going back to two thousand and two, when the area was brought into the urban growth boundary. Um, so with that, I'm not sure if county council had anything else to add about communication with the public.
Um, sure, excuse me. Um, we, we gave advice about the the difference between legislative and quasi judicial proceedings and the possibility that something that becomes specific could be considered after the fact and, uh, quasi judicial proceeding and that people should act carefully. Um, there were some questions about this advice. I went to the planning commission and clarified that if they didn't want to go, they could, uh, that there was just some level of risk. And if it became quasi judicial, all they need to do is disclose any ex party contacts at a hearing.
Thank you both. I, I appreciate the clarification and, um, I've, I've just been aware of some of these issues and I uh, wanted to make sure that we're talking about all the issues as we look at this ordinance. So I appreciate, um, all of your, uh, information being forward.
If I could summarize what I've heard from that, thank you, Vice Chair Treese, for those questions. Our action in, uh, potentially adopting ordinance number eight eight one is legislative and not quasi judicial. Mr. Cars nodding, it has said yes. Similarly, similarly with, uh, adopting the findings, uh, which is a subsequent action and he's shaking his head, yes, a legislative, not quasi judicial. Uh, and, uh, to be clear as well, that the planning commission has recommended adoption of ordinance number eight eight one with the exception of Exhibit Two, which is specific to one eighty-fifth, uh, where they have provided no recommendation. And as we've heard described, uh, their two different planning commission meetings, uh, ended up in a tie and broad support for all other amendments. So they advanced no recommendation with regard to Exhibit Two.
I do understand that. Thank you. But thank you for the clarification.
Well, no. I'm summarizing mostly, uh, for, for all of us, but especially, you know, including me as a voting member. Uh, because I did have, uh, conversations with a couple of planning commissioners. And, uh, one of them, uh, wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence to make sure that, uh, I understood what the planning commissioner, uh, uh, events were, uh, at their deliberations at both of those meetings. And I feel that staff has And I feel that staff has adequately represented those discussions and the subsequent outcomes. So thank you, Steve and Erin. Are there any other board questions?
I have all.
Go ahead, Commissioner Phi. It's hard to see your little yellow hand. Sorry.
I figured you might not, anyway. Thank you too, Herenten. And thank you, Erin and Steve and everyone for that presentation. I too wanted to bring some comments and concerns, and more importantly, questions that I've heard that was sent to me on the record and see if there's any, because I was trying to listen closely, and I'm not sure these questions have been answered. So Erin, I'll ask these questions and to the best of the answer you can give us today. And I, you know, knowing that there was two hearings in November, I too felt like, okay, maybe this was a little rushed ordinance, but, but I also wasn't present of the extent of the conversation that happened at the Planning Commission. So with that in mind, the questions that I got was, and I think you sort of touched on it, but I'll just ask because I agreed with the constituents that these were good questions that I should bring forward. Are there further environmental studies that can be completed at this time was question one. And then regarding 185th, what are the transportation impacts of not extending 185th was another one. And then the other question, the other third question was, what are the emergency vehicle impacts if we do not straighten that road? And then lastly, why does this decision need to be made now when the road will not be constructed for some time?
Thank you for those questions. I tried to jot them down, so please remind me if I don't get to all of them. So if I could actually ask to go back to slide number, I think it's 17, so that we can display that. So regarding, yes, thank you. So regarding the environmental impacts of this potential extension, what this map is showing are the mapped sensitive environmental areas, basically. This is where we know that we have some environmental constraints that we're reacting to. And so as a part of doing this work, we looked at the fact that our transportation system plan had already identified what we call that refinement area, meaning that we had identified that we have a need for a north-south connection somewhere in this area. But at the time, which was 2015, when that refinement area was adopted into the plan, we knew that there were some environmental constraints, and there were some topography challenges, but we didn't have the time or the funding to do a study that would show us where we could fit a roadway. So the Urban Reserves Transportation Study, which was funded by Metro, was our opportunity to hire an engineering firm to look at these maps of our understanding of the riparian areas and also look at topography, look at LiDAR data, and see if there is a way to feasibly build a roadway through this area. So that's what the engineering firm was able to do. So they were able to show that, yes, it is possible at a high-level planning level to draw a line that connects Gazzner to Kemmer through this area, avoiding the known sensitive environmental areas. So to get back to your question, though, is it possible that we could do more analysis? Or is it possible that there are further environmental constraints that we don't know about? At this level, it's difficult for us to do any more environmental assessment than we've already done. The more extensive environmental work that we need to be done would require site access, and it would require much further detailed engineering work. That is what is normally done at the time of project development. So at the beginning of the presentation, Steve talked about that Chevron. So at this level, we're saying we need a transportation connection in this area. We know it generally needs to follow this alignment, but we understand we may need to shift that through the project design work. So at the time and the future, when these properties are ready to be developed, the property owners voluntarily annex to the city of Beaverton and can be served by Beaverton Utilities, they will go onto the sites and they'll start doing their much more detailed engineering assessment of how they'll build housing in this area and how they will fit the roadway. And so that's the time when that more detailed environmental work will be done. It's difficult for us at this point to do more than that. The really big decision that was made here was to add this area to the urban growth boundary in 2002, and that said that we would find a way to respond to these things and plan for the area to be urbanized. So that's the answer to your first question. Are there transportation alternatives that can be built instead of this one? I think, as Steve referenced, we know that we have an identified need for additional capacity as we build these 17, 18,000 additional housing units around the Cooper Mountain area. If we can't build this extension, we would need to look at possibly adding capacity to 175th, possibly adding capacity to 190th, Gazzner, Kemmer, as we talked about, which is highly constrained and probably somewhat difficult to do. So that is something that we would need to go back to the drawing board and think about where else. Or we don't, and we live with the congestion, and we live without having the system redundancy and resiliency that's important. There was a question about emergency vehicles. You know, similar to having the system redundancy and resiliency, a roadway like this is going to be much easier for emergency vehicle access than the 290-degree curves that we see on Gazzner to 190th and 190th to Kemmer. So this would provide for better emergency vehicle access. That was actually something we heard from one of our Planning Commissioners as well, that this looked like a better emergency vehicle access. That also applies to any large vehicle, so TriMet buses, for example. 185th is a route that could be looked at in the future, and this would be possible for a bus to access, whereas the existing curves would be somewhat difficult. And then I think the last question was, why are we doing this now? Well, the area was brought into the urban growth boundary in 2002, so we've been looking at it for about 20 years. There have been a number of years of study in close coordination with the city of Beaverton about how we're going to plan for this area to eventually be urbanized. In 2015, the results of the Cooper Mountain Planning Area were brought into the, were adopted into our transportation system plan, as well as into Beaverton's, and that identified the refinement area. The Urban Reserves Transportation Study brought on an engineering firm to tell us how to draw the line. So that's the answer to the why now. We now have a lot more information than we had in 2015, and staff are ready to propose this amendment.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
I don't have any more questions, Chair Herenten.
Other commissioners? I have a clarifying question. And Erin, it goes to making sure I've internalized the summary or the responses that you've provided, both for Commissioner Treese and Commissioner Phi, and I appreciated their asking their questions. For the 185th item in the exhibit, if you could go back to slide 17 for me, please? And there may have been another slide on this exhibit that I just don't have in front of me at the moment. But my question is, so the, the, by including exhibit B in ordinance 881, it, I assume, provides for a particular, it outlines certain needs, such as I've heard you talk about that additional capacity is needed. Certainly, it will also be a roadway that enables that new UGB expansion area to be developed. My question is, is there anything about this decision that would be embodied as part of 880, as part of this TSP that I can understand a roadway being needed for connectivity to develop this? But by virtue of potentially adopting exhibit two, is that saying absolutely, for sure, it will be in this proximate area? Or are all those details still to be? What I'm hoping is that it provides the construct to say that a transportation solution will be needed, both to provide the level of connectivity needed and, you know, the, the environmental information so that future planning can then do the appropriate work as part of the development planning period. I'm trying to get to a question that, that recognizes that there is angst amongst various parties that our decision will obligate, that it'll be very prescriptive. And so I'm hoping that you can articulate the level of enabling that our action today provides, but that all those prescription-level details would be done as part of the project planning and design ahead of us.
Yes, I think that the way that you characterized it there is 100% accurate. This is a planning-level amendment, so we are saying that we've identified a need for a north-south roadway facility in this general vicinity, but the specific alignment of that and the specific design of that will be determined at the time when development occurs in this area. So adding it to our transportation system plan really just preserves the right-of-way. It preserves the ability for us to, at some point in the future, or city of Beaverton, some point in the future, to require development to dedicate this right-of-way to build a roadway in this general area.
So it's right-of-way in a general area, but not specific?
It's not specific, correct.
Okay. Okay. And if folks want to stay engaged and involved, they need to continue to be mindful of the work that the county would be doing in partnership with the city of Beaverton?
Yes.
Okay. You've answered my questions. Thank you. Commissioner Treese?
Thank you, Chair. I think to take that piece of the discussion just a little bit further, I think that there's a perception, and I go so far as to say a fairly commonly-held perception that once this goes into the TSP, that it's, it's, it's more rigid than that. And what would be this, what advantages might we have if we were to propose this amendment to exclude number two? In other words, to approve all of the other pieces of the ordinance, but not the 185th extension, and to have us have the opportunity to look at it into the future? And I'm asking the question so that I have, you know, just a whole array of information available to me.
Sure. So excluding exhibit two from this ordinance would retain the existing transportation system plan refinement area for this general area. So it would leave that hashed line designation that covers basically east of 190th over to the riparian area that you see on this map. What the refinement area text says is that we have identified the need for a north-south facility in this general area, and we will evaluate that further at some point in the future. So if we did not have a specific line, and properties are able to voluntarily annex to city of Beaverton, and they're ready to come in and build however many housing units on each individual property, the city would look at the transportation system plan documents, and they would see what sort of roadway is designated there. So that's probably quite a ways down the road, and it's something that we could look at further and bring back at some point in the future. What I like about doing it now is that Beaverton is already showing this road in their concept and comprehensive planning documents. And so this documents our partnership with the city, and it shows that we're working towards the same certainty for future development. But if we did not include it in the ordinance, it would just mean that we continue to work towards it, and we continue to partner with the city of Beaverton.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I, like I said, I'm trying to look at the whole spectrum here. Appreciate it.
Great. Are there any other commissioner questions before we move on to a public hearing? Nope. Okay. Thank you very much. So at this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Yes, Madam Chair. First up, we have Hattie. Hattie, can you hear us?
Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to three minutes.
Hey, thank you very much for taking my comment today. I'd like to submit comments, obviously, in regards to the ordinance 881, to ordinance 881, specifically the 185th Extension. I'm obviously strongly opposed to it for a couple of reasons. The wildlife has been mentioned a number of times, but I want people to really take into account that this is a corridor adjacent to the Cooper Mountain Nature Park, which is highly used by deer, coyotes, rabbits, hawks, and other small animals that have their homes in the fields in the forest here. This extension, whenever it does happen, is set to destroy all of that. The majority of this land is under a long-term farm lease. There's currently a farmer working the land, harvesting wheat, which he relies on for his annual livelihood. I also don't believe that the extent of scope that the 185th Extension involves is appropriate for a mid-cycle ordinance. It's not an amendment to an existing road, as the others are. This is the creation of a brand-new road, and it shouldn't be considered until the next full TSP update. The land is zoned FD 20, so no one's going to be developing in the near term. And you've heard the word of the property owners that we have no plans of developing this. There's no reason to rush this amendment through at this time. I'd also like to point out, I'm the member of the public who reached out to a Planning Commissioner. I don't know if it's appropriate to say which one I reached out to. After speaking to council, she got back to me and said she would like to tour the land, but wanted to do it on her own without me. At that time, I told her how to access the land, and she was free to walk it by herself. I would not join her, and I did not contact her after she took that tour. I just wanted to put that out there, since there was a question about that earlier. In conclusion, I see that much of Cooper Mountain is being developed, and the need for infrastructure comes along with that. I agree with most of the proposals in this ordinance. I really do. But the extension of 185th is not in line with the rest of the proposals. The destruction and sacrifices it requires are not worth the limited-to-no advantages it brings. I hope this board will take into account the input of the citizens of this area and pass ordinance 881 without the inclusion of the 185th Extension. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Jeannie Goodman. Jeannie, can you hear us? Jeannie, can you unmute?
I think I did. Am I there?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Please go ahead.
All right. My heart and feelings about this land, which is then my home for 10 years now, are in the written testimony I submitted, and I hope you've all had an opportunity to read that. But I have some further comments that are unrelated to the topography. First of all, the need to sacrifice this land is based on pre-pandemic planning for South Cooper Mountain by Beaverton, which our area is not part of, and Metro. The numbers projected have not been proven or realized yet. Number two, the driving patterns, as referred to by planners, have changed since that time due to work at home, fuel prices, energy conservation, and other pandemic factors, and they're still evolving. Number three, the Mid-Cooper Mountain Development Plan has not yet been completed. It's not due to be finished before 2022 or later. All of these points make this section of ordinance 881 a rush to judgment, in my opinion, based on a plan which may be revised. And then two, I believe that this issue needs to be held back to provide sufficient time for further environmental impact studies in order to be certain that the state of Oregon Planning Goal V, in light of LCDC injunction and the Luba reprimand against ordinance 869A, is being applied and adhered to. Hannah, I think that's all I have to say. I thank you all for your time and your efforts on this and for your consideration.
Thank you, Jeannie. Next, we have Jim Long. Jim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Please go ahead.
As you know, I live in the Metzger section of Tigard, was recently, but I was recently contacted by residents of Cooper Mountain, so I'm not a NIMBY there. But I've been up in that. But I've been up in that neighborhood and looked at it. And it appears this extension of 185th Avenue does not make sense. The primary thing, I would say, the first thing that jumped out at me was safety issues. It's very steep. They always have weather problems, from what I understand, with cars at the side of the road. And even your emergency vehicles would also have some problems like that. So I'm concerned about that. I I think that there needs to be, well, I should ask as a question, has there been a recent inventory of wildlife species in this area? Has there been a recent inventory of endangered plant species in this area? How many mature trees will be affected by this kind of this kind of planning? I'm, as you know, probably through my many years of discussing, it seems that the county's inventory of significant natural resources is out of date. I think the the recent couple of months ago, the Luba remand from the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Resources. Apparently, about 185th, there's a lot of questions raised, and there's some things, there's some endangered and threatened species. I think the Goal Five protections help promote diversity, and I know the county's big on diversity. Well, apparently, there are petitions with the federal government to protect red-legged frogs and pond turtles. And it seems that details of environmental impact should be considered prior to approval of portions of this ordinance 881. I was on Jeremy Street, and that surely just doesn't make sense to me as part of how that would be part of part of an extension of 185th. The state is too steep. So those are some of my questions at this time. I understand there's another hearing that's going to happen on this ordinance. So please advise me in response to some of my questions before the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Seymour. Ken, can you hear us?
Yes, I got you. Thank you. I'm one of the affected property owners, obviously. I've submitted some testimony and written testimony to you folks. And, you know, the road does go right on my property. But I do have some questions as far as, you know, the the actual strategy here seems to be somewhat misaligned. You know, there is no plan, that I'm aware of, to improve the remaining portion of 185th Avenue. And I'm talking about, you know, from the hill down, from Farmington Road up to the hill up on up on Gassner. That completely, that road is not being addressed at all. So then I've got to ask you guys, well, what good will a bypass do to improve traffic flow if you're not going to improve the rest of 185th? And the other thing is, that last upper stretch of 185th actually has the least amount of traffic as compared to other avenues of getting up to the hill. Traffic going up 185th, and I've submitted this in my presentation to you folks and written material, that the traffic, a lot of the traffic, majority of it turns off of 185th onto Bany Road and other avenues, even before it gets to the top of the crest of the hill. The majority of the traffic coming up Grabhorn Road goes along Gassner, but it turns up 190th to get to cut across to get over to 175th. So therefore, no one's going to want to take that route to go to the new bypass. They're going to still want to take 190th Avenue. And speaking of 190th, I respectfully disagree with staff about the way this road can be improved. You know, if we're not improving 185th, what good does it do to put bike paths in an area where it's just a small stretch? So the the road could still be improved by widening the turn radiuses. And the cemetery was brought up, that is not a historical cemetery. It is an old cemetery, but it's not listed in the State of Oregon Historical Registry. So those two radiuses, the one on Gassner and 190th, and the radius on Kemmer and 190th, they could be improved if we really set their minds to fix it. So that's pretty much what I was going to bring up, other than the fact that there's one other area in my presentation that shows that Metro identified in 2005 a natural deer crossing going from the nature park right across that roadway, proposed roadway, going into the other wilderness area to the north. So it's exactly right over where the the road is being planned. And that's on Slide seven of my presentation. Anyway, I respectfully ask that you consider deferring this, taking it out of the plan. I have no plans to develop the property. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Would that takes care of all of our signups. Would any other members of the public wish to provide comment that hasn't already spoken? Goodman, you have spoken, Mr. Long, you guys spoke for your time allowed. I don't see any additional hands, Madam Chair, and I will note for the record, in addition to the packet of testimony you received from me yesterday, we did receive an additional eight emails in opposition to the 185th extension as included in this ordinance that will be shared with you as part of your constituents' report on Friday.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. I know I have a couple of questions after the public hearing, but first, let me open it up to my colleagues to see if you have any questions.
Chair Harrington, I don't have a question. I have an amendment to this ordinance. Is this a good time to suggest now, or?
Can can I ask my questions?
Absolutely.
Before that?
Yes, absolutely, go for it.
So first, and this is where I'll need Mr. Carr's advice as well. On, Mr. Long asked questions about the inventories of wildlife and species in this area. Mr. Carr, from in in your being our county council, have has staff done the appropriate level of planning that is needed, given this public hearing input in order for us to move forward with the ordinance as currently proposed?
I believe so, Chair Harrington. The at this level of planning, they have done what they needed to do.
Okay. And could the kind of planning that he is describing, could that be done in subsequent planning steps?
Yes, and as I understand, some of it would be required if there was actually a proposal to build a road.
Okay.
This this level, they're not at that at that stage.
Okay. So my second question is, as a result of hearing Mr. Seymour's testimony, so we've, we, in our earlier Q and A session, I got clarification that some type of road will be needed to provide connectivity into this new land area should it move forward for some type of development. And that this TSP amendment enables appropriate planning to support potential project development planning in later stages. But it does not require that that level of work be done until the jurisdiction, City of Beaverton, Washington County, and the the property owners and and interested developers are ready to do that.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And could we just get a clarification about what the existence of the cemetery, how that affects things?
I I don't know. Perhaps someone from transportation knows better.
Yeah, if maybe I could address that, I think cemeteries have some unique rules around them about implications for things like road construction. And so we're currently working on another project that affects the the edge of a cemetery. And so it it essentially requires voluntary voluntary agreement from a cemetery in order to dedicate any land. In other words, the the county would not have condemnation authority to require them to dedicate property essentially to facilitate a roadway improvement.
So if if I'm correct in understanding you, any roadway improvements in this area that may affect the cemetery, there would need to be subsequent agreement with the folks who own and operate that cemetery property? Am I correct in understanding that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay. Then my last question was, do we have the opportunity to? What happens if we change this ordinance and adopt all portions of 881 today, but don't wish to act on Exhibit Two? What are we putting? What would that option shelve? What effect does it have, so on and so forth?
I I can maybe speak to it, and then maybe Aaron can jump in. But I think there is, as we noted earlier, there's an existing refinement area over over this larger group of properties that are bounded there by 190th, Gassner, and Kemmer. And so that would remain in place if if the board opts not to move forward with the 185th extension alignment changes here. And then, again, we would anticipate at some future date a need to come back with this same same topic to further refine the alignment to make sure that we have that adopted into our plan so that, as you noted earlier, that the subsequent steps in the planning process can play out.
I would also note that you would you can't just adopt the ordinance and not that piece. You'd have to engross the ordinance to take it out and have the two subsequent hearings.
Yep, understood. Okay, my my questions have been asked and answered. Procedurally, Commissioner Phi wanted to make a proposal. And so I I want to respect that. But Commissioner Treese, you may have a question based upon the answers, an explanation that was provided to my question. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. And does to the staff, does that engrossment have to happen today? What is our, you know, I I'm not sure. Can you help me with that? With the time?
We, I'm sorry, you'd move for an amendment, and then we'd bring back an engrossed ordinance. It has to be at least 10 days later, and there has to be two more public hearings if you engross a land use ordinance.
Okay, but this is the last opportunity to do that, is what I'm I'm putting for, I'm asking.
Well, that's correct. If you pass it today, you can't engross it later. But if you don't pass it today, then you could engross it later. It depends on your action.
There are at least, there are three paths. Okay, one is to adopt 881 as is. And that's what we have before us. A second path is to not adopt 881 as is. And a third path, which I think Commissioner Phi may be leading us to, is to amend ordinance 881. And if that was done, then there would need to be a new version of the ordinance, hence the phraseology of engrossing it with subsequent actions to be taken. Is, does that help? Yes, she says, okay. All right.
And, Madam Chair, if I could, real quickly, I know Mr. Long asked a question about or mentioned that there there could be subsequent hearings. And so, again, to to that point, if the board were to adopt the ordinance today or to reject it, there wouldn't be additional public hearings. If you do direct us to engross, then there would be the two additional public hearings required on the engrossed ordinance.
But in the subsequent actions as part of the project development planning and whatnot, there would be hearings involved with all of that?
Probably not, not not in terms of public hearings. We certainly have public engagement opportunities as projects move into a, you know, a refinement and design scenario. But but I wouldn't categorize those, I guess, as public hearings, just to be clear.
Oh, okay. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just one procedural motion before we move to Commissioner Phi to close the public hearing.
Yes, I should have done that much earlier before we went to Commissioner questions. Thank you, to make sure I closed the public hearing. Mr. Carr, I hope I didn't just mess up the whole process.
You did not, Chair.
Okay. All righty, so Commissioner Phi, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I really appreciated hearing what the constituents said about this ordinance. Thank you so much, everyone that came to testify today and offer your feedback and comments. I would like to make an amendment to this ordinance, Chair Harrington and commissioners, and that is to remove the 185th portion of it and move forward with the rest. And Tom, I don't know if I said that correctly with the Roberts Rule, but but that's my amendment.
That's fine, Commissioner Phi. And I would read that as striking the material on page two of the ordinance from lines 15 through 19, striking a letter B, and then striking Exhibit Two.
We need a, we need a motion on the whole ordinance before we amend.
So there should be a motion.
I know I've been doing this wrong. Okay.
It's okay.
It it's fine, we need a motion to move the ordinance and then a motion to amend that motion.
I would move the approve the ordinance.
I'll second the ordinance, the motion.
Now you can do amendment.
Now you can make a motion to amend.
Good, thank you. And now I make an amendment to what, exactly what Tom said, strike.
Item B.
Item B,
lines 15 through 19 that referred to attachment two.
Yeah.
And then Exhibit Two itself.
Exhibit Two, thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Willie? That was a second, not a question? Okay. Are there any?
Discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, it's your area, and I understand that predominantly. But we have done these all over the county, these corridors, as I'll call them. And it's good transportation planning. And so I I I think that Stephen and Aaron and Andy and those others involved are just doing what we've directed it to do. And that is to look at corridors. We know the population. Metro brought this property in. I understand people don't like it coming in. I understand they don't like it developed, but it was brought in. And so kicking the can down the road, so to speak, I I don't know is the best alternative. If if we want to sit there and an amendment says, gee, we'll take it up later to refine it, that's one thing. But if we're just taking it out to discard it, that that doesn't do anything. I mean, we we have to have good transportation planning in the area. So I I guess I'm I'm not opposed to some sort of amendment, but I'm really confused if we just strip this portion of the ordinance. It it looks like we're pretty negligent in our job to provide a transportation plan. That's what it looks like to me, so that's my comment.
Any other commissioner comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
I think this is a question to Roy's comment there is, I don't think we're eliminating this from future consideration forever. This can come back around. We are just saying at the moment we're going to remove this from the ordinance. And I I tend, just looking at it, again, I I didn't do a lot of homework, other than all the information we got here. But it just looks to me like I think that's what we should do. And then, again, we can sometime in the future, if the demand is there, we can bring this back for reconsideration. And then again, we can, sometime in the future, if the demand is there, we can bring this back for reconsideration.
I'd like to comment on that. Again, I'm not opposed to Commissioner Phi's amendment. It's just the way it kind of shaped the appearance of it is that we're opposed. And I understand from Commissioner Willie that it can come back later. It just seems like we need some sort of comment that makes sense, that we're not abandoning. We're not saying it's not good planning. We're saying that there has to be further consideration and an understanding of how the area is going to develop. So I guess I'm just trying to look for some phrasing that makes everybody say, well, in the region, for instance, well, I guess when the rubber hits the road in Washington County, you don't want to plan because it's too tough. And that's not what we're doing, and that's not what the staff is doing. This board's never done that. So if there was some wording that might suggest that at this time, we're not taking that up, but we understand the importance of the planning, understand the importance of some roads going through there, that that will be considered in the future. So that there's language that three years or four years or whenever it is, some other future commission said, well, they didn't just throw it out, kick it down to us. They looked at it and said it wasn't ripe. And maybe I'm not explaining that right, but I'm trying to get to something that makes sense to me anyway.
Commissioner Rogers, if I may, exactly what Commissioner Willie said. I wasn't thinking of just throwing it out. I would like the staff to come back with more information and more time to talk through this. But at the moment, to proceed with what's in front of us, I like this piece to be removed.
I have a question as to the current recommendation. Ms. Angie, at this juncture, well, it's to Ms. Angie and to Mr. Carr. References have been made to do additional, potentially to do additional work. And it's my understanding, based upon what we've had the opportunity for briefings, for presentation today and Q and A, that Washington County staff and the Planning Commission have done all of the appropriate work and that there isn't other work that's been identified yet, or at least that I have the benefit of understanding from today's discussion to better inform the recommendation that the planning, that staff took through the Planning Commission process, and that is before us today. You know, it's, well, I could go on about, you know, the fact that this was a 2002 UGB decision and we all have to swallow that pill and move forward. But that is just color and doesn't affect anything. So I'm a little unclear as to what the additional work part would be.
Could I, may I jump in here? Am I stepping on someone toes here? I think part of it, and I'm answering the question that, Chair, you've asked of Commissioner Phi, so I apologize for that, but from my perspective, it is also to buy time to see what happens to that area, not just get more information about the existing situation. As you say, it's already, all that information is already there. So by taking it out, from my perspective, we do get the time to see what happens. And I think that Mr. Willie also pointed that out.
But that's the part that I'm wondering about, because nothing more will happen unless this exhibit is adopted with this amendment to the existing refinement area. If, as I understand it, Mr. Carr and Ms. Wardell can, and Mr. Roberts can correct me, but no further planning or project activity will be done. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, you know, we feel that we've done the appropriate level of analysis and research that's appropriate for this level of transportation system plan. As I mentioned earlier, I just want to reinforce, we have that larger refinement area in the plan. So if the board were to choose not to move forward with this more specific alignment, there's still that bookmark, if you will, that placeholder that says we know we need a roadway through this area. So future planning efforts would still need to consider the need for a roadway in that area. I think with the work that we've done so far, we have a pretty clear idea of what an appropriate alignment is in there. So, you know, in some regard, future planning work will still need to happen. I think what we're doing is, as someone said earlier, I think we're just sort of pushing that more specific decision about an alignment out further into the future.
With the recommendation that ordinance 881 embodies, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, if the ordinance were engrossed to remove the specific 185th alignment, then we're just, like you said, just sort of pushing that decision a little bit further out into the future. So the refinement area is that placeholder, you know, we know a road needs to be constructed through here. And, you know, as I said, this ordinance would just simply provide a more specific alignment. If you choose not to implement the more specific alignment, the refinement area stays. So more work would be needed in the future.
So in a way, to me, it boils down to, we've gone through the process. We just don't like the on-the-ground details that are included in it, but we can't change the fact that the topography is what the topography is and that the land is what the land is. But this is the best we can do through the current planning process. Am I correct in that?
I think that's a fair assessment. And I guess I would add too, if the board does adopt this specific alignment, that doesn't preclude the board in a future ordinance amendment from either refining that alignment or changing the alignment in some way. So adopting it in the ordinance today just simply, again, prepares the way for additional planning work with a little bit more certainty about the future alignment of that roadway. But again, if there were some significant change in circumstances at some point in the future, the board always has the capability to come back and reconsider the roadway alignment or the lane designation or whatever decisions that might be made in the present.
Can we clarify what you're referring to? Because as I understand it, this TSP work that you've done for this area has been informed by all of your documentation and work on any future improvements to the lower part of 185th up the hill as I think it was Mr. Seymour referred to, as well as any improvements on Gassner Road. So when you talk about any future board decisions, I'm curious as to what would lead, what kind of, what would precipitate such work? Hypothetical work?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't know that I have a good answer to it. But I'm just saying, if for some reason there, I heard mention of, you know, future planning work that might provide some different indication based on circumstances unknown in the future that we can't foresee today. So the board always has the opportunity to amend the adopted plans of the county based on whatever information is present and available at any given time. So I think that was my point, is that, you know, if the world changes for some reason, the circumstances change, you do have some flexibility to go back and make changes in the future.
Yep, we reserve the right to get smarter, more informed.
I was just going to add to that, too. We had an ordinance a few years ago where we refined a road alignment because through the development process, we identified a wetland that hadn't been identified previously. And so we needed to go back and refine the roadway alignment because of that. And that's an example of how, when we go through the development process, we do that more detailed environmental work, and sometimes we need to respond to that through a legislative action. Okay. Commissioner Trees?
Just one last comment here, too. I guess the other concern, and I'm just going to raise this again, is that we don't have a recommendation from the Planning Commission on this. And that, and we have a vacancy on the Planning Commission's, and so we're ending up with a tie, so to speak. That's my other concern and leads me to be more supportive of taking it out. So I'm just going to say that that's, it's something, I look to the Planning Commission to provide guidance on these types of things. And in the absence of that, I have concern.
Are there any other board questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving this amendment, we already have a motion and a second from Commissioner Phi. Please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? Thank you. The amendment passes three to two. I just want to express that for staff, this vote does not, is not a reflection on the work that you've done. You have, in fact, done all of the requisite work, which is exactly why I voted against it. We just don't like what the answer that the process has given us. But for me, that, that's, these are the hard decisions that we have to make. So, but the amendment has passed. As such, we now need a motion to engross this ordinance to come back for an amended ordinance. Am I correct in that, Mr. Carr, who went away? Or Mr. Roberts? Procedurally, am I correct?
I would suggest making an explicit motion to that effect, I think. Yes, thank you.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Trees to engross a modified ordinance 881. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor of development of an engrossed ordinance, please vote by saying aye or raise your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously five to zero. So Mr. Carr, the amendment that Commissioner Phi made passed on a vote of three to two. And we just had a motion and a second and a vote five to zero to engross an amended ordinance and to work the process to bring that back to us. Is there, procedurally, is there anything else you wish us to do?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. So given that, we do not need to proceed with our action item of E1, which would have been to adopt the findings on the original ordinance 881. So that brings us to oral communication. Clerk Moss, sorry, my screen keeps changing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak to us for up to five minutes?
We have no one signed up, Madam Chair. Would any members of the public wish to address the board for up to five minutes? Not seen any hands, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to board announcements. Per usual procedure, I'll announce that next Tuesday, we have our board work session in the afternoon, starting at 2:00 p.m. A board meeting in the evening, starting at 6:30 p.m. The subsequent Tuesdays, our meetings are canceled. The board wishes everyone a nice December holiday period. And then we'll pick back up with our January meetings. On Tuesday, January 4th, we'll have a work session, starting at 8:30, followed by the Washington County Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00 a.m., followed by the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a roundtable scheduled for the morning of January 6th and the following Tuesday, January 11th, a work session day, and Tuesday, January 18th, a work session and board meeting in the morning. Are there any other additional board meetings, board announcements this day? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn today's Board of Commissioners meeting? We have a motion from Commissioner Willie, a second from Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, colleagues. And it's now 12:16 in the afternoon. We do have a number of items on our agenda. Do you wish to, and one of them is time certain, actually, I think both of them have outside speak, well, no, do you wish to start at 1 o'clock so we can continue to have our time certain at 2:00 p.m.? Well, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rogers, it looks like four of us are ready and prepared, so.
Right. I'll be back a little late, but that's okay.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you all later then. Thank you.